Okay, let's call a meeting to order. It's Tuesday, November 28, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes for reports received and filed?
None.
None. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings, events.
I think we just got Eastside Business Association Friday. That's about it. Life Meeting Week.
Really?
Yes.
What's up?
I canceled them all. Business season. Got other stuff to do. Shopping for you guys.
Supposed to have some bid openings this afternoon. I've got an MMRPC executive meeting tomorrow at 11:30 and a TAC meeting at 1:30. Williams Keepers Holiday Open House tomorrow at 4:00. Safety meeting Thursday. I won't be here, Debbie.
Thursday?
Yep. That's safety meeting. I won't be here. LEPC meeting isn't that Thursday, 11:30? That's what I got on my calendar.
I don't have anything down for it.
That's all I got.
We're not all on it, are we?
No.
Okay.
I've got, I actually got invited to go see President Trump tomorrow, but I can't go. Transportation Advisory Committee tomorrow. Strut Your Style Fashion Show for Cancer, Williams Keepers. Friday's Living Windows, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Saturdays Toys for Tots out at Hy-Vee. And then the J.C.'s Christmas Parade, 4:30. And then Monday night's the Capitol Region Board of Governors Dinner.
I can't make it.
We're gonna give you an award.
I can make it.
That's all I've got.
As long as it's cash.
Yeah.
Cash award.
Get a trophy?
Okay. Resolutions. We got retirement Marcia Walters.
Marcia, Marcia, Marcia.
Marcia. You gotta come up? I gotta take my glasses off. Okay.
The laundry.
Huh? Now we gotta be careful and do this because this is a big concern. Whereas in December 1995, Marcia Walters began her career in Cole County working for Capitol Region EMS, carrying on to Cole County EMS on July 19, 2009. And whereas Marcia has been a dedicated employee for department directors, including Bruce Crowder-Wild, Mike Schertz, and Jerry Johnson. And whereas prior to joining Cole County EMS, Marcia was employed by EMS in Lorrie, Missouri, Bidenmore and Ambulance District, Capitol Region Medical Center EMS. And whereas Marcia has been a very dedicated employee for the last 22 years.
That's great.
In Cole County.
You made her cry.
And whereas while performing her duties as a paramedic supervisor and emergency medical dispatcher, she directly and indirectly influenced the care and treatment of thousands of residences. And whereas Marcia has become known throughout for her extraordinary cooking and baking skills, often providing the EMS staff with the fruits of her labor in addition to coordinating traditional EMS events and potlucks. And whereas Marcia raised four wonderful children along with 13 grandchildren and one great-grandchild. Whereas Marcia is an active member of her community in Stover, serving on the First Baptist Church, Youth Life House Coordinator, Stover School Booster Club, Chairman of the City of Stover Park Board, and City Council. And whereas during retirement, Marcia plans to spend time with her family, especially her grandchildren, in continuing her dedication to public service through her many community activities. And now therefore be resolved that the people of Cole County do hereby thank and commend Marcia Walters for her years of faithful service and loyalty to the county. We also wish her the very best in retirement and many enjoyable years ahead, and we will truly miss you.
And that's true.
It doesn't matter.
I tried to find you, man. This is as close as I can get. But if that's where your grandkids.
Do you wanna get a picture with your EMS career here?
Yes.
You guys come on up and get a picture with Marcia here.
Thank you. Yeah, since we took it over, very instrumental in keeping things moving.
We'll get out of the way.
If you had to keep those guys in line.
You wanna hide in the back? Why? I mean, we're doing assessments. Have two rows there or something.
Yeah. Thank you for everything.
Thanks again, Marcia. Hey, no stranger. You can cook for us anytime you want to. We'll put you first on the agenda with that one.
We gotta write some shorter resolutions.
Well, you were talking.
I wanted a blue one, but I, you know, I thought, well, okay.
Thank you, Marcia.
Okay, we are gonna deviate a little bit from our agenda because we are going to the Randall Drive. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Did she bring donuts?
Oh. I think Extension Service probably bought donuts.
Oh, the Extension brought donuts.
She brought Sam a Christmas gift.
She did?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Signing of an order finding the Randall Drive Neighborhood Improvement Project completed, assessing the cost of such project against the properties liable, therefore, and providing for the collection of such special assessments and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Hi. I'm Stageman Gilmore and Bell. Happy to be with you again.
See ya.
And it's, I mean, this has been a long time coming. A couple of years ago that you were presented this petition to form the Neighborhood Improvement District to improve this particular street. So you basically read it in the title, but you are declaring that the project is now complete. I'm told from Public Works that that is true. And then what we have done is taken the total costs that have been paid for the project along with the legal and financial advisor fees that are yet to be paid but will be part of this long-term bond issue as well, assess those against all of the properties on a front footage basis. And so I gave you, the order has the final assessment amount for each property in the exhibit. It also has as Exhibit C the notice that will go out to the property owners tomorrow. And I'll take care of sending that notice on behalf of the clerk's office as we've done before. That notice will go out along with a copy of this order. But what I gave you separately this time, hopefully this makes it a little bit easier and answers some questions in advance, I gave you a spreadsheet that's two-sided. The first side of that is the one that has the little yellow highlight on it. And that is each of the properties. It's got their front footage over toward the right side. And then the final column that's highlighted in pink is their total assessment to be paid, assuming that they prepay and they're not gonna roll it into the annual assessments. Those assessments match up with what's in that Exhibit B to the order. On the other side, which is, I think, based upon the last Neighborhood Improvement District project, these are the questions you probably get asked more often. And this is, well, if I don't prepay it, how much will my annual assessments be? We can't say for certain right now what those will be because it's all dependent upon the final terms, interest rates, and pricing of the long-term bonds. That won't be established until probably around mid-February. But based upon Joy Howard, who's your financial advisor on this, based upon her best guess, she thinks that the maximum annual payments that the county will be required to make is $35,700. That's down in the box at the bottom. And then when you multiply that out times the, you know, proportionate square footage or front footage, I'm sorry, for each property, you get the amounts in the pink box on the right. And that gives you just a rough estimate of what their annual payments would be if nobody prepays.
And those payments would include the interest?
Yes.
And costs?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Whereas the other side does not?
That's right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And, I mean, you may have already noticed that I didn't bring the preliminary assessment order with me, but when I was preparing the final, it appears to me that these final costs are about two-thirds of what the original estimate was on the preliminary assessment. So, no credit to me. That's your Public Works guys.
Right.
And the bidding process came out much better than anybody anticipated, I think.
So the $379,000 on this one side, $375,000, that really doesn't include the interest and?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Do we know what the final total's gonna be with the interest and we don't know that yet?
You know, I didn't, hold on a second.
I was just curious.
I do have some rough numbers from Joy on that. The total estimated debt service, if no one prepays.
Right.
With interest, gets up to like $660,400.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Do you need all three of these orders?
I've got two right here to be signed.
Okay.
Okay. So this is what you emailed us, right?
It is. Sorry, killing trees.
I saw it.
Just in case.
Make sure I was looking at the same stuff.
It is.
He's been out in the woods. That's too long.
That's where you belong.
So you need a motion to approve this as written? We good?
Yeah.
We're good.
I move that we approve and sign an order finding the Randall Drive Neighborhood Improvement District Project completed, assessing the cost of such project against the properties liable, therefore, and providing for the collection of such special assessments and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go ahead and get you to sign this if I can.
Just that second page or third page.
Okay. While we are doing that, we will move ahead with our presentation from our invited guest, which is the University of Missouri Cole County Extension Presentation.
You can put both them microphones in the back if y'all want the, that table, how many you got there? Get you a table to decide. I'll get you one to decide. The rest is trouble.
Good morning. And I apologize, I didn't think about bringing donuts. I'll try to remember that next time.
That's all right.
I just introduced myself. I'm Matt Herring. I'm the interim Regional Director for the East Central Region for University of Missouri Extension. Cole County's on the kind of the west side of that region, extends as far east as Lincoln Counties in the north and St. Genevieve Counties in the south. I brought with me today Joe Britt Rankin. She is our Program Director for University of Missouri Extension in the areas of family and youth. And also James Quinn, who serves as the County Program Director for Cole County. He's also a horticulture specialist, just recently asked to serve in that role. He may have worked with Chris Thompson for many years. He recently has taken on new assignments, and so we've asked Jim to take on that role, and he has. Just today, we're about explaining a little bit about a new staffing plan that University of Missouri Extension is moving forward with. We're trying to meet with all the county commissions and extension councils across the state. And this is actually our first meeting with a county commission in the East Central Region. So if I stumble a bit, it's because I'm, this is my first foray. But just to, I guess to explain that University of Missouri Extension does work to bring higher education to people across the state in a wide range of areas. We have a fairly new Director of Extension that started August of 2016. And when he came in, he thought that we should evaluate our system and do a needs assessment. And so we held 42 community conversations around the state. One was held here in Jeff City, reaching about 1,200 people to get their thoughts and ideas about how we could do things better. Out of that emerged some ideas and really kind of three areas of concern or areas of effort that we should focus on. Economic opportunity, healthy futures, and educational access. And so that's kind of the three big areas that people believe we should be doing more in. People also told us that they want more local touch and to be responsible, responsive to local needs. They want a source of in-depth knowledge that they can trust. And they also recognize that some of our programming can be, needs to be high-touch where we're interacting very closely with people or others want to consume our education and information using technology. And so we have to recognize those changes over time. We've been in business for a little over 100 years. Extension started in Missouri, really nationwide, in 1914. And we continue to try to evolve, to adapt to the changing needs of our people. One of the big things that we want to share with you today is that one of the staffing changes that we are, would like to implement is the concept of a county engagement specialist. And this would be a person that would be very much focused on, in this case, Cole County and its needs, spending about half their time interacting directly with the community, with the county, with community organizations and so forth to learn the needs and very much ferret out those needs that are there and find ways to bring in education to address those needs. That person would also be serving as either a youth specialist or a nutrition specialist or a business or economic development specialist. In this case, we're probably targeting a nutrition specialist to serve in that role. We generally have set things up in trios, so three counties would work together. And so we would have one of each of those three specialties serving in those three counties. And in this case, Cole County would be joined with Osage and Callaway Counties to work as a trio to implement programming. We also will continue to have specialists in lots of other areas, for example, agronomy. Horticulture livestock might serve up to six to nine counties. Then we might have other specialists that might be serving even more than that, specialties like ag business, human development, family and financial education. So those are some of the things that we're thinking about implementing, and I kind of wanted to be here to share that. And I might turn to Joe to see if she has any other comments to share.
Matt covered a lot of it. You know, I think, this is my, I think, sixth county I've visited. And, you know, one of the things I think we really want to stress is this local touch. We had not addressed our staffing structure for almost 50 years. And really compliment Dr. Stewart in coming in, not only did he do the 42 community conversations, he commissioned a research company by the name of Tekonomy to come in and look at where we could have some improvements. Also brought in a panel of six thought leaders from across the nation to really say, where could we improve our system? I think, you know, as Matt talked about, the three grand challenges, educational attainment, health and nutrition, health and economic development, it didn't matter what part of the state we were in or who we talked to, those were issues that are on everybody's mind. And so I think we're hopeful that you would agree that this is an area where we'd like to move forward in. But I think we also want to know your thoughts on, is this a plan that you feel you could support? And also, are there things you would like to see from Extension in Cole County?
I think anything you do is great. Nutrition specialist, our health department is doing some of that already. And as we move into our new building next year, we're talking about even doing more with it. So you might want to work with the Cole County Health Department. So we're not duplicating. And, you know, you just, you know, we could.
No, I completely agree. I was in Jefferson County last night, and we talked about, we're also working now with job centers and workforce investment boards as we talk about workforce development issues. So really wanting to see how we can expand those local services, how can we complement them.
I would think that that county engagement specialist could be, play an important role in better understanding the relationships and how we can complement each other versus potentially competing with each other for programming. There's always probably more than we can ever get done, but if we can work together, we probably can accomplish more.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's great.
So obviously, you guys do a lot for our community, and we appreciate that. But there also comes a kind of a price tag with what we can financially support too. So, and I know in years past, you guys have asked for cost of living increases and various other things, and we get that. So obviously, this is a financial support request, and what kind of dollars are we looking at to, is this a totally new person, or is this a?
In this case, we're really not, we're really not asking for dollars to support this new person. This person is really someone that's already on staff.
Okay.
And at this time, we're not really asking for new monies.
Okay.
It's more to explain our new staffing plan, and this is the direction we're wanting to go.
Okay.
Are there opportunities to grow Extension, of course?
Right.
But that's not really what we're about today.
Okay.
Yeah, I think today, they just wanted to tell the new, how they're gonna staff it. James took over Chris's spot. Chris, luckily, we're still gonna have in the Cole County office and be able to utilize him. I think they did a lot as far as economic development. He worked a lot with the chamber on stuff. I think it's an underutilized tool. I think they probably, I don't know how to educate people more on what's available out there. When you think of Extension, what people think of agriculture stuff, you don't think about.
For creation and agriculture.
If somebody's wanting to start a small business, they can go there, Chris will work for them or work with them. And I think it's very instrumental in getting a plan together, a business plan and stuff, instead of they just jump in. I mean, some people toe-dip and try to work their way into it. Chris will work with them. Some of them just jump right into water. I mean, he works with all of them. So whether it be finances or, you know, just keeping track of your bookwork and stuff. But that's one of them. Economic development, agriculture, and then education, as you said, as well. So I think they do a lot for the community. I forget what we have in the budget for you. You remember Debbie was at $85,000 or something? But I mean, it's a small portion of what y'all get. And y'all do generate some revenue as well. We have the Extension Fall Festival. A lot of the programs they do charge for, so it generates revenue.
Yep.
So I think today, just if you have questions on what they do, this is probably the perfect chance to see. And then when budget time comes, we can decide what we want to do from there.
Right, right.
But today, I think this is kind of what I wanted to tell what they're doing in the community and educate us on who they are and what they do.
We appreciate your support. And Extension is a little bit unique in that we, we've always described as our funding is kind of a three-legged stool. We get federal funding, we get funding from the state of Missouri, and then we have local funding for the local office. And it's been a great partnership.
Sure.
Probably one of the greatest challenges, though, is that our federal and state funding has been flat for a long, long time. And if anything, if there's really been any growth areas, it's been in the local funding. And I think it's largely because you can see what's going on and you can appreciate the value. Very much appreciate your support.
And I'm hopeful that these community engagement specialists will help with getting the word out and, you know, helping as they're networking through their local communities that people will understand what those services are. Because I do think we haven't done that one.
I don't have any questions. I mean, you guys are a great job, and we're glad to support it, so anyway.
Yep.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Yep. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Moving right along. Any Commission comments?
How do we turn thermostat down?
Just left all the bodies in here. Trying to get them out.
Too many politicians in here talking about it. Larry, can you quit breathing, please?
Okay. Beds and contracts. That's 3:30. Well, we don't need to worry about that. Unfinished business. I'm just going down the line. Okay. Any unfinished business? No. New business. Accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable. There's about four invoices out there for today's date.
Are any of our miles just on the, on there? Okay.
I move that we approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Jefferson City Acxiom Plastics Bond Project.
This was sent to Sam and it's part of notice to the taxing jurisdictions. In a nutshell, Acxiom is going to transfer title of that new building or the building it bought over to the city of Jefferson, which is gonna float bonds to finance improvements to the building and personal property additions to the building. And the bonds are gonna pay for all of that, cost of the building and so forth. In turn, Acxiom is going to lease the building from the city of Jefferson, and that's going to equal the, basically the cost of financing the bonds. So where you all come in is they're going to, Acxiom is going to pay you what they call pilots' payments in lieu of taxes, which will exceed what you would have gotten otherwise on the unapproved property. And I just kind of have some notes here. If you want to turn to page two, where it talks about the property tax abatement. Because Jefferson City's a political subdivision, it doesn't have to pay property taxes on its property now. And if it did lease the building to Acxiom above what it's using for its bond finance payments, then it would have to pay taxes on that overage. But that's why it's gonna even out. So there's not going to be any property taxes paid, which is why the deal includes Acxiom paying pilots to the taxing jurisdictions. The description of the projects at the bottom of page two.
to the building and personal property additions to the building. And the bonds are going to pay for all of that, cost of the building and so forth. In turn, Acxiom is going to lease the building from the city of Jefferson and that's going to equal the, basically the cost of financing the bonds. So where you all come in is they're going to, Acxiom is going to pay you what they call pilots' payments in lieu of taxes, which will exceed what you would have gotten otherwise on the unimproved property. And I just kind of have some notes here. If you want to turn to page two, where it talks about the property tax abatement. Because Jefferson City is a political subdivision, it doesn't have to pay property taxes on its property now. And if it did lease the building to Acxiom above what it's using for its bond finance payments, then it would have to pay taxes on that overage, but that's why it's going to even out. So there's not going to be any property taxes paid, which is why the deal includes Acxiom paying pilots to the taxing jurisdictions. The description of the projects at the bottom of page two.
Is this affected?
There's a hearing, Larry, next Monday evening. And if the taxing districts, if you have questions or comments...
Well, their tax bills have already gone out.
I don't know about that. You can talk, I mean, that is not, that's not part of what I'm dealing with here. So that's something that would be addressed with Acxiom or the city, but the bonds, they're just, they're just going to consider the ordinance on Monday.
Well, I'm assuming this is going to replace the tax bills, how they've been taxed already, if it's approved this year?
I mean, they're considering an ordinance on Monday. And it's an opportunity for comment, comment by, so I don't think it's going to affect this year because they still have to do the bonding.
I think at the time the tax bill went out, wasn't this, this was the Chamber spec building?
No, that had already, they had sold to Acxiom.
Had they already done that?
But the Chamber...
Before, before.
Tax bills didn't go out until number 10.
But the Chamber owned it as of last January 1, though.
Yeah, I think the Chamber did.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they already always...
Well, I'm guessing then they'll all pay their taxes for this year, but this isn't, I mean, they still have to do the bonding and all that. At any rate, I don't know. You have to ask Jeff City. Just some other notes, page four.
So I mean, we do need to kind of find that out, though. We need to figure out what's going on with it.
But as of January, as of January 1 of this year, I think the Chamber is still owned it, right?
Don't matter, it's prorated on real estate like that.
Yeah.
But Acxiom hasn't transferred ownership over to Jeff City yet.
Right, so Acxiom owns it.
Right.
So they'd be, they'd have to pay the taxes on it.
Right.
So when would they transfer ownership to Jefferson City?
It's not, it's not that clear. Well...
Question is this guy to call?
PJP will convey the entire project site to the city in 2017. Okay, the abatements, though, are 2018 through 2032. So... Okay, 2017, company required to make a payment in lieu of taxes in amount equal to 100% of the amount of added real property taxes which would have been paid in 2017 had the project site not been exempt from such taxes. They're just having a comment period on Monday, so...
So why have they been transferring it?
I don't, it's not clear, Jeff, that they've been transferred it yet.
So they don't pay the taxes, rather than, rather than having them formally come in there and saying, you don't have to pay this, they're just going to convey the property to city of Jefferson until the time it runs out and then they give it back to them?
Well, typically the pilots are less than the taxes.
Oh, and here, the pilots you would be getting, and that's...
Based on a 75% abatement, so they're going to pay 25%.
On what you would get on the approved...
On the real property, right.
It's...
They're going to abate 75%, yeah, for 15 years.
And seven years on personal property.
Yep, and 75% abatement on personal property.
For seven years.
Yep.
You go to the back to the exhibits and it goes into the pilots, basically the pilots are going to pay, is, the amount is more than what you would receive on the unimproved property.
So are the pilots going to be for all the taxing jurisdictions?
Yes.
Including the city?
I guess, I don't know. Yeah, here it is.
Which one will you add?
Let's get exhibit two, Jeff. Well, here's the, here's the summary of the cost benefit analysis. Go to the back to the exhibits. Page two.
You send it?
No, I have not sent it.
They sent it to Sam.
Well, there you go.
I passed it on to Jill. I passed it on to Jill.
I don't know, I just haven't had a chance to really look at this yet either, so...
Well, the hearing's Monday night.
But what say do we have in any of it? I mean...
Well, you can give them your opinion.
I'd do that all the time anyway.
I mean, beyond that, I don't know, Jeff.
But what effect does this have on us, I guess is...
Well, they're baiting the taxes on the improvements, but what you're going to get in pilots is more than what you would get if the property were still sitting there like it's been sitting for the last 10 years or whatever.
I don't, I don't disagree with them, but it's still a fraction of what the, what the bill is for this year. That was my only concern, is changing what we build them for now. And evidently they haven't. I think they'll have to go through the assessor's office first to make a change to how they're bringing back. And that changes what our tax bill is. Isn't that normally correct?
Yeah, the Chamber will...
Notify you?
Will send us paperwork.
So you haven't, you haven't got anything?
No, I haven't seen anything right here.
Sean came in and talked to us about it, but he didn't, we haven't received any paper from them yet.
Who came in and talked to you?
Sean.
Okay.
Chamber of Commerce. And it is supposed to start if it runs out in 18, 2018.
So it starts from whenever they bond it or get all this done and do the abatements? Or does it start from when they transfer a property?
No, it starts as of 1-1-18.
So then they have to pay it up until 1-1-18, right?
Yes, they would pay, the way I understand it, they would pay this year's tax.
It's going to be interesting. Get your calculator out. Get ready to decipher. I mean, why wouldn't it be done from the get-go when the property's transferred? But it doesn't really affect us except for the assessment, right, in collection, what dates we're actually going to collect for, what amount.
I mean, I'm concerned they were already changing things as close to the end of the year.
Which that's not a big deal. People sell houses in the last month of the year all the time, but...
Well, but that doesn't change the tax.
Nope.
Anyway, there's a hearing Monday.
So can the assessor's office kind of look at these values and, I mean, have you guys looked at any of their equipment or any of their stuff as far as personal property and then what the real property is going to be?
The real property is still under construction. Last time our field gentleman was out there, he's still working on.
Okay.
And they might, they might have finished yet or not, but we don't know yet what the numbers will be for next year.
So obviously if it's still under construction, they haven't moved all their equipment in yet, then I would assume. But all their manufacturing equipment can't be in there, it's still under construction, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, we don't know yet how much will be in there at the first end of the year.
Sean was supposed to bring us some paperwork. He hasn't brought it since. So I guess it's still under consideration, right?
Well, it sounds to me like they're going to vote on it Monday night.
I guess...
That's kind of putting the cart before the horse, isn't it?
I wasn't confused before, but now I am.
Glad I could help you.
So I can only imagine, you know, the assessor's office, collector's office, I mean, there's a lot of stuff we're going to have to look at, but really what does it affect us at this point besides that? Those headaches, probably figuring it out. And did they rename city of Jefferson to city of St. Jefferson? That's pretty cool. Patron saint of...
Terry Hall had done.
City of Selfie Jefferson?
St. Jefferson.
They have selfie shirts, we can get them all those. Yeah, you might tell them they have a typo on the front page.
Yeah, city of St. Jefferson.
I kind of like that, though. Be the next Catholic, that'd be the next Catholic school in Jefferson, St. Jefferson.
Lutherans probably wouldn't like that.
That's ambitious.
Okay.
So who's going to meet Monday?
I'm going deer hunting.
It's an open game.
But we all know we have to post it.
I can't because we have cap region's board of governors and since Jeff's not going, I have to go, I have to go represent.
We have to post it if we're all in.
I'm going to be a board of cap region.
So at least you're out.
Yeah, at least.
That's a hard question.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, re-adopt the current CCHD wastewater ordinance.
So we've been working on a difficult sewage case and we realized there was a small error and it's actually not in the ordinance, it's in the, it's in the order that was signed by the commission in 2014. So we're just asking for you to re-adopt that ordinance and then soon we'll be probably bringing you an enforcement process that we plan to follow, just so you know what will go on when we have difficult cases where we can't get the homeowners to bring the system into compliance. And then in the new year, we'll probably kind of be looking at all of our ordinances to update them and probably our fee structure too, because the fees are very low compared to the surrounding counties. But today I just need a re-adoption of the ordinance that was adopted in 2014.
So obviously this is just a cleanup, but we still don't really have any teeth.
Right.
Right?
But we've been working, you know, at the enforcement process that's laid out in statute and rule is to work through the county prosecuting attorney's office. I think if you asked every single county in the state of Missouri, they would say that typically that that's not a good process. But we actually had a really great discussion with our county prosecuting attorney's office and they've agreed to help us if we can kind of do some late work and work with the sheriff's office, which I haven't talked to him yet, about getting the probable cause statement. So we were actually getting an enforcement process laid out to where we can get these situations taken care of. So I feel like we're making progress.
Is there not a way to abate that like we would for trash or something else?
I don't think that the statute that outlines the onsite sewage regulations allows for that.
Basically, we'd have to go in and put a onsite waste system in and then try to bill them for it and...
Right. Currently, we've like put a restriction on their deed, so if the house is sold, it's a notice to the new builder or new buyer, but...
But then if they pay cash for it, it's not going to matter. If they go get a loan, it would be an issue, but I don't know, we're dealing with one right now that we're just, we're trying to work through the system, but the neighbor, the grass is getting greener towards his fence as it goes. And that's not necessarily a good thing when you have your wastewater treatment system there, so...
And the, and the other issue with this one is, yeah, they didn't get a permit. We don't know what they put in the ground. They've used a plumber to do it who was not...
Uncertified, not certified.
Right, a licensed installer, so there's a lot of issues with this.
And we have to, you know, have proof that he did it, which we don't really have proof that he did it. So I mean, it'd be like giving me a speeding ticket because you know I'm going to speed sometime and, but you got to catch me first, John. I'm just kidding.
That a challenge?
No. Ward's old deputy already knows me.
The state, you know, is the one that licensed the onsite sewage installers, so they have to be the one to do something about the plumber, but since there's no actual proof like an invoice that the plumber put it in, it's a difficult situation.
Well, this isn't the first one that we've dealt with and it's, I mean, it's frustrating when you can't really do anything about it. It's great to have an ordinance, but it's all fine and dandy as long as everybody plays by the rules, but...
Exactly.
I mean, I'm good with this, I just, I just wish there was more that we could do to...
You too.
Because I know we have, we have had people bring their stuff into compliance, but I guess that's more on just them doing the right thing.
Right. We could explore that, well, there is some provisions in there about fines, but we could explore assessing those fines.
I'd like to look at that, Jill, if you can, see what we can do where we can have some teeth in this.
Put it on our tax bill.
Because there's a provision in the statute that every day that they're out of compliance and the fine is charged, so it's per day.
Let the record show that.
Larry was telling Chris he was number one. So as we, as we look at the ordinance, we'll, we'll look at some...
If you smash your finger, you can show them this. Hope that wasn't... Sorry, I saw that.
We're diverging.
You lost us.
Yeah.
Sewage doesn't...
Okay.
I move that we approve the changes to the onsite wastewater treatment system ordinance.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
They're signed. Please, please, please. Okay, we get to have more fun. 2017-22 Assessor and Collector Software Discussion. Ryan said we should think about awarding and if they will, should think, but anyway, discussion.
All right, Larry, Chris?
Yeah. Yes.
Jennifer in here?
I'm going to give these two.
Do you want to talk about pricing or...
We gave them a copy of the bid. I have a copy of Joe, they use different names. I'll make a copy of it because I've been giving them.
For what?
With the Acxiom products.
Oh, you got your copy, Sam?
I'll make a copy of it.
Or did I give you that? Where did it go?
Here. Here.
Keep it to St. Jefferson.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, obviously we had two demos in the last couple of weeks and anyway, so we'd like to move forward with selecting one, one supplier to basically take care of our needs for the assessor and collector's software. So just would like to hear what you guys have to say about either system or both systems or...
You can go first.
Currently, I've got responses from all the departments in my office, pros and cons. I hope to meet this afternoon or after this meeting to talk about these and see which one seems to be the better option to us. I think they were both very good pieces of software and I think both of them would probably work. I think they were both very good pieces of software, and I think both of them would probably work. It's just a matter of working out the logistics to see which one will be the best. And that's gonna be a discussion in my office, and as soon as we get something in there, then I will pass that on to you gentlemen.
So it's pretty even, and you thought the softwares were pretty comparable?
Yeah, I know the product that we have right now, but the other company that came in, I was impressed with what they had, a lot more than what was there previously. There are a couple of things that I have questions about, and there's a couple of questions I have on the other company, too, that I'm gonna contact them and get some answers to, and then they'll give us a pretty good footing to make a decision.
I think if you two can kind of, and we talked to Ralph a little bit, too, but he's kind of a newbie on this, but if you two can work it out and then come back to us with a recommendation, that might be the... That might be the easiest.
Well, for us, Clear Basin is missing several of the things that we have now that we find very important and use every day. They're not in any first-class counties, and a lot of the smaller counties probably don't have the volume in the types of things like we have. But the things that really concern us the most, Clear Basin has no way to attach documents to taxpayer accounts. We do that almost on a daily basis. Bankruptcy notices, we attach to their account, if there's a bad check, we attach that to their account. Correspondence, we attach to the account, so that when anybody in the office is looking up information for a taxpayer, that's readily available for them to pull up and look at that letter we sent to them. For instance, if they call referring to the letter or something like that, that person doesn't have to go hunt for a paper file somewhere. It's right there for them to look at. In addition, with DevNet, when we take a payment at the window...
Bring donations next time.
When we take a payment at the window, we scan that form of payment, whether it be a check, a credit card receipt, or a cash in ticket. We scan that, and it attaches it to that customer's account. So if we have a question later when trying to balance, or a customer again calls and wants to know when they paid their account, or who paid it, we can pull up an image of that form of payment, that check, cash ticket, or credit card receipt. Clear Basin doesn't have that availability either. Interest that we have to give to taxing districts, Clear Basin said they didn't have, they didn't have any way to apply that only to certain taxing districts. Leans, which we collect for the city and the county, they don't have an actual way to add that lien to the tax bills. You can add a miscellaneous, but it wouldn't say miscellaneous, it wouldn't say Jeff City lien, or Cole County lien, or things like that that are important for taxpayers want to see on their tax bill. They have no way to track bankruptcies currently in the DevNet system. We can enter a taxpayer in bankruptcy, it will track the... We can enter the payments that we receive from the trustee, bankruptcy trustee. It will allow us then to post those payments once we collect enough for any tax bill that's unpaid, and process all that automatically. It wouldn't have to be a manual calculation. I think Kristin can attest to, the old way we did bankruptcies was not very efficient or effective. And then there's a matter of reports. All of the reports that the clerk's office uses, and I should really let Dawn address this, but she has multiple reports that have to be sent to the state for the school districts, for monthly collection reports. Clear Basin said they did not, they could provide that information, but they didn't have them report ready. So we could print out the information, Dawn would then have to manually fill out the state's report in order to submit it to the state, where DevNet's current software automatically fills out those forms, and all she has to do is mail them in. So that's reduced a tremendous amount of work that she's had to do in the past that was all manual.
Also, DevNet, you can put railroad utilities in the DevNet system, and when you run reports, like all my assess values to all the districts, it will show what's on the local assessor's records, plus what's on the railroad and utility for state and local. And they said in the Clear Basin, they would have a separate system for the counties, and like a separate software program for the railroad and utilities. So then those would always have to be like added together from two different systems, two different reports, to send out the information, when everything else now is just adds them all together because it's needed on everything.
That's, and I guess probably one of the biggest things for us is we need to be on one system. I don't know if Chris agrees with that anymore, or doesn't agree, but certainly, we continually had problems. There are not near as many, and I can't blame them all on intrinsic or Clear Basin. I think DevNet's had its faults over the years also. But being on one system would eliminate a lot of those issues that come with the bridge. We also talk about, I know, real estate is their big thing, and they have a great system for real estate. Their accuracy is one of the best, if not the best, in the state, and I can understand that they want to stay with being able to have that type of accuracy. But already, since I think middle of October, we've had to make over 400 changes in names and addresses on real estate parcels. After Paul makes them in the assessor's office, he emails them to us, and then we have to turn around and make them in our office, which is double work. Being in one system would eliminate that, the change would be made, and it wouldn't follow all the way through. I think there are great advantages to being on one system. I think if Clear Basin had all these other things, you might be able to say they are equal, but they don't have these things. So in my opinion, at this time, they are not up to par for, definitely for what we need in the collector's office. I think the transition from, at least on the personal property side, to Clear Basin would be, or to DevNet would be fairly smooth from Clear Basin, because currently, we have all the personal property records in the assessor's module. We actually have an assessor's module in the collector's office, which would be the same module that the assessor would use. All of their vehicles, all their personal property information is already in there, as far as I'm aware of. I don't know if you disagree with that, or...
Sorry to interrupt, but this is, you're talking about DevNet, so the integration or implementation would basically be seamless. The migration of data, you're saying, is pretty much gonna be seamless?
For personal property.
Okay, so...
Now, all the residential records are in there also, the real estate records are in there, and the commercial real estate are in there. But the calculation part of it is not in there. So there's still quite a bit of work that would have to be done.
So then they're gonna customize the system for us, or we have to go in and do this stuff, I mean, is it the software system?
Yeah. I don't want to speak for them, they are in the process, they've gotten the contract for the city of St. Louis, which obviously is probably the largest, hosted the largest in the state. Sean Ordway, who actually was the assessor here and created the, helped create the system here in Cole County, is the deputy assessor for St. Louis, and DevNet is in the process of creating the same system again for him, for them, that they had here in Jeff City, are very similar. Which, in essence, if it is in true, in fact, what was developed here would give the assessor's office everything they need. Or at least, that's my understanding, again, I don't want to put...
So they are basically customizing it to the needs?
To a market-based system rather than a appraised...
So it's not here, it is, you take or leave it?
Appraised value system.
I'm not sure what system they use to call it market-based, but it's a little bit different than what we do.
But most assessors use like the Beck, Marshall Swift for valuing homes, rather than using the market.
Yeah, and we've customized that to Cole County. And one of the questions I had was, was there a provision in the RFP to allow us to go split on the contracts, say, personal property for one company and real estate with another? I don't know if there was a provision for that or not.
It just wasn't addressed.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just, I'd like to get to a single system, if we can find one that we agreed on.
I think so.
Great, because I think it's more efficient, and it's just better customer service, and hopefully, we can find one that'll work with both of us. So that's the direction I would like to go, I don't know if we have to decide today, or tomorrow, or next week. I mean, there's things we want to look at, and if you're meeting with staff today, then...
I'd like to get some answers to some questions, which will really make a big difference in what we're looking at.
I wouldn't have either one of the presentations, I apologize, the very first one, I overlooked it on my calendar, and I didn't think it was fair to go to one, not the other. But, you know, there's things that... Which one do you think's gonna require more hardware that we don't have, or what's gonna require more training? Is it all stuff that we can jump right into, and...
It kind of depends on which, you know, portion you're talking about. If we go to Clear Basin, obviously, it's gonna be a whole lot more work for the collector's office. If we go with DevNet, it's gonna be a whole lot more work for the assessor's office.
So it's a little more for one or the other?
Yeah. And I'm not saying that it can't be done, but that's one of the things that we have to look at to make sure that this can be done.
Yeah, we tried the two separate ones before, I don't like that at all. I mean, do we want to... I thought we kind of had decided we was gonna try to make a decision today, if you haven't had a chance to really look at it.
But Brian had said that we might be a little bit premature, and I don't know what...
Some of the things that I think about when you jump into these things are, you know, the migration plan. As far as, you know, whichever direction you go, whether you go from Clear Basin to DevNet, or DevNet to Clear Basin, you know, I want to see like a timeline of events, and I think that, I think that there is probably a seamless migration for things that are already in DevNet, if you went that direction. But I would want to see something more detailed as far as what's guaranteed on the migration. I come from a software background, and I have yet to see one that's perfect, so where are we at on that scale? And, you know, I do that, then the second thing I would be really interested in is the hardware platforms, because currently, the assessor's office already has their own server, and so does the collector's office, because they're running two different packages. So when you combine those two, I'd have to look and see, you know, the specifications on the collector's hardware to see if that's gonna work as well. So I just think there are some open questions that honestly need to be answered before a decision's made on those things. And I don't know that that's ready to happen today, I know that a decision needs to be made, but I just don't know that making that call today without getting these things resolved or answered would be prudent.
We are probably good even if we renew till the end of, the end of the year, which is gonna be here pretty quick, and then we can renew with, well, one of them is a month-to-month basis, and I think the other one was quarterly. So it's good through March if we renew now, right? Is that what the email said, Jennifer, kind of, sort of?
That's how.
Is that how you're at it? Okay. So I mean, we can go basically month by month, or until March, and still be covered at this point.
I think that we can have everything done in our office well before the end of the year, you know, and letting you know what we think of both of the products, and which way we think would be the best way to go. I don't see any reason that it can't be done well before Christmas.
How long are the prices good for on the bid?
Better than the five days.
So 10/26 to... End of the year, if we should be covered, but it'd be nice to... We got a lot of stuff coming up with budget, but if we can make a decision sometime in one of the meetings.
I think we could try to make a decision in December.
I'd like to have a decision made next week. We need to go on this, so... I mean, it's, you know, we've spent a lot of time, we've spent this whole year doing this, let's make a decision, and let's move forward. But, I mean, obviously, I think if we give Chris another week to talk with his staff, I mean, we should be able, ready to make a decision.
Depends on how soon we get the answer to the question.
Brian, you can do some checking, too, and see what concerns you have we need to address. I don't, I'd like to move ahead with it as well. I'd like to have us all on board with it. So if we can put it back on the agenda next week, we'll talk about it next week again, and that worked.
I think overall, DevNet was $65,000 less. DevNet does...
Sort of.
What is sort of?
Nothing sort of.
Well, you made the comment.
I warned myself I didn't need to.
DevNet does have a recorder's package that I think they're demonstrating for Ralph this week, maybe, Ralph told me, I'm not sure, but Judy was gonna set something up for that. I don't think Clear Basin has a recorder's package.
No, I like the idea of having it all tied together.
I would agree, too, something we have to consider, though, is, you know, one of the requirements was it has to be a system that's currently in operation in a county office in the state of Missouri. And part of it will depend on what their timeline is to come up with this product that they're putting forward for St. Louis, because if that's the case, and they have that product, and it will take care of all the needs we have, then that might be the way to go. But it depends on how long it's gonna take to get that product up and running.
Sure.
And of course, you know, Larry has a different busy time than we do, so we gotta work in those numbers also. But that's on my list of questions to get answered.
Let's try to get it so we can make a decision next week. Next week.
So Brian, do you envision a system working off of one server, basically, and communication, both directions?
Right, yeah, so I'm not really worried so much about the communication between the buildings, because we've got fiber between there and between the assessor's office and our office. But, you know, Chris brought up a good point, and that is, you know, they're in the process of developing this enhanced product for the city of St. Louis, and that's what's gonna evidently fit what he needs, more or less. Am I right, Chris, the way it's looking?
From what I've heard, yes.
Yeah, so my question is, is how do you buy a product that isn't actually there yet? I mean, I'd be interested to know that.
People get married all the time.
Absolutely.
What they're talking about is one piece of the equation for the reassessment that's coming up in 2018, 2019. That's the piece that we are developing for St. Louis. We have a working system here in the state of Missouri. So I think the question is, is the five appraisal on-the-fly application that you discussed, Chris, at the demo two weeks ago, was the piece that is in development. As far as the overall system goes, that system is in place, it's just an enhancement to the, to one of the things that... The processes that you guys do here in Cole County is the piece that we're working on. So like I said, just one piece, the overall system is built, deployed, and running in numerous counties here in the state.
And you guys have a timeline to implement that for the assessor's office?
One thing that we do do is we do do a kickoff meeting, so those will be the times that we sit down and work on the master plan, you know, like Brian had mentioned, that's when that'll take place. That kickoff meeting can last anywhere from several hours to several days, depending on getting down the workflows of the individual offices. As far as the hardware goes as well, you know, we can get in contact with our IT director and have conversations with Brian as far as what you currently have, what will work, what purchases might still need to be in order moving down the road.
Weren't you really kind of asking the timeline of when they have that product?
Yeah, the enhancement for the City of St. Louis.
I think it's, it's a matter of figuring out, like I said, what is your timeline? When do you need that up and running? I know there was, there was talk of a 2018, 2019 reassessment. I don't know off the top of my head right now when that piece will be completed, done, signed off on. Obviously, as was indicated in the demo, we are under contract to develop that for St. Louis.
Okay.
And, and, you know, what, what your timeline is might push that up the chart a little bit.
How far along are you with the City of St. Louis?
Uh, we're currently, uh, we, we are under contract first of January, so basically just less than 365 days so far with them. So obviously it's a big project, so...
Are you operational with them or you're still...
Still migrating, yeah. But, but as far as the, the other piece, we have hired a, a full-time statistician on board to work on that. So like I said, those pieces are in place back at the office for that, for that individual component that, that you guys are looking for.
Okay.
So, and another question I had too was, has there been migration from Clear Basin to your product?
From Clear Basin to DevNet?
Well, the real estate, I mean, I don't know.
We do it yearly here, basically.
So what you're saying is, is have we migrated a Clear Basin client so far for the assessor piece? That, that I don't know. I can, I can check on that.
All the parcels are in.
Right.
DevNet now, right.
It's just the panel portion that we have never...
The calculation.
Right, the calculation portion.
So as far as conversions and migrations, I mean, we, we do it every, every day. I mean, every time that, that somebody switches or, or we bring out a new client, that is the, the main piece of that. So that's something that we're extremely familiar with. And, and all indications are it's, it's clean data. So with clean data, usually becomes clean, clean conversions.
It'd probably be better if we just take this offline.
Sure. Yep.
And we'll do conference calls.
Yeah, we're, you know, we're here today. I, I mean, I have no problem sitting down with Chris, trying to set up a, a, some sort of web demo later in the, later in the week to, to address all of his concerns. I mean, that's, that's what we want to do. We, we, we want to make sure he's comfortable moving forward with DevNet if that's the decision that, that he chooses to make. So like Larry mentioned, we do have Thursday at nine o'clock, the recorder demo is scheduled. So once again, you know, we're here to, we're here to address any issues, concerns that, that you might have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
One other thing I'd like to point out that I think is in Clear Basin, I think offered two days of training and DevNet's training is unlimited.
It has to be with you. Oh, I'm sorry, Larry.
They also offered margarita machines in our offices.
That was in our fee, wasn't it?
Larry, remember?
Love you, Larry.
Margarita machines too.
I was just kidding.
Do the other finger.
I just think if you throw a stapler at him.
Sorry, Larry, throw that in there. No, that is a good point though.
Yeah, I can tell you Andrea, when we first went live with DevNet, she was probably here three weeks every day. She's come back multiple times and spent days in a row or one day, you know, working on getting everything to where we wanted it to be and answering questions we had. They've been very responsive to us for sure. And I can't, I can't imagine tackling a new system and, and learning everything about it in just a couple of days' time. I'm assuming that beyond that, there's a charge for training. I don't know that for sure though, but just looking at what he says excluded would concern me.
Okay.
No. What day do we have a meeting next week? Do we got a budget?
Yeah, it's a Tuesday at eight.
Yeah, we, we...
Be sure, but I mean...
We went to eight because we figured we could conduct some other business before we start the budget.
So what do you think about any time next week works for me?
Yeah, I mean, if we can get our answers, questions answered, you know, maybe we can make a decision next week, so...
What's, do you want to put it on the agenda for Tuesday then? And if we have to punt to Thursday, we've got time to put it on Thursdays. But we've got budget on all those, so we need to keep it moving and...
That's fine.
I know how we are. We'll be here for an hour unless you have something shiny for me.
Well, man, if Larry and Chris can agree...
It should be.
Larry and Chris can agree on which software they'd like to go with. I think it's a pretty easy decision for us, so to just move forward. But, I mean, obviously if that doesn't happen, then, then it's a discussion point and so...
Just need to get some questions answered.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Sounds great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Get that? Okay, Russellville ordinance.
Morning.
Morning.
This is just a parking ordinance, the one that we need you guys to approve so we can start enforcing. This is a parking ordinance that Russellville has put into place because of tracker trailers parking in the main thoroughway and in the alleyways, which is a safety hazard on their part. And the jail is already looking at this.
And Russellville's good with it?
And Russellville's one who wrote it.
Okay.
Okay.
It's their ordinance, right? Just so you're telling me an okay from them?
Yeah, I just need you to okay me to enforce that Russellville.
Okay.
Looks good to me.
I don't think it's assigned to me.
Is that different than some of the health ordinances that we've, they've had to adopt our ordinance or something?
Yeah, those are completely, that's a statutory thing. Adopting Christie's ordinance, this is just for, John has an agreement with them to enforce certain ordinances.
Okay, alright. I move that we approve the ordinance.
I'll second. What was the, what was the answer that compared to the health? I mean, why can these be different than...
John has a contract with the City of Russellville to enforce some of their ordinances.
Their own ordinance.
Can we do that same thing with the health then? Can we, or do they just...
It's, it's different statutory.
Okay, so we can do that with that, but not with health?
Right.
That's messed up.
Well, I mean, unless they wanted to contract with our health department, but that would cost...
They do contract with the health department.
Well, but the kind of, the difference would be is that we'd have to have all these ordinances in place for this, which could vary from every township.
So there's two things. One is you all, you all have already agreed for an overtime project in Russellville.
Right.
So we're over there right now enforcing state laws because they wanted more presence.
Right.
Now, what this is, it's a, it's a, part of the agreement is, is that this ordinance now will be in effect. So we'll start enforcing this. This is the only ordinance that, that I will be enforcing in Russellville. They, they have a couple others that they were wanting me to and I, and I've said no to them because of time. So, so I don't mind doing this one. It's, it's an easy one. There's only a couple trucks and I think we can do it without actually having to write a ticket.
Right.
So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a win-win for us. Any other moving violation, they do, there is in that agreement, there is one for animals, for picking animal up. But anything else, I would have to bring to you guys before I would start enforcement. And I would not be, I'm not moving any direction on signing any more ordinance for enforcement in Russellville.
But even, even if you wrote a ticket on this, it'd be up to them to collect it, correct?
No, actually it would go to state court.
Okay.
It would still go to Judge Sidergren's courtroom. And they would get some money out of it, but I, it's very...
Not in the local order.
Yeah, well, it would be very miniscule. It, well, on the, on the towing and all that stuff. But it would be very small, if any.
So if we have to tow a vehicle, do they get charged the full towing cost?
That's between the tow truck operator and the individual.
Okay. These are just the fines?
Correct.
Any other questions there, Jeff?
I don't know, it just opens doors for a whole bunch of other stuff. I don't disagree with them wanting to be able to do something about this. Can we do one of these in Osage City? When they park in our ditch?
No, because it's not incorporated.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of a rhetorical question, but so...
But if it's, I mean, if there is a parking issue down there, they can call us and we can come down and take a look at it.
It's not that they park there on purpose. It's someone they're trying to turn around because they can't read signs.
Oh, yeah, well, we're trying to, you know, the last time that happened, we actually sent a patrol car out there and we've contacted the company.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Actually, I actually had the highway patrol go out and do an accident report because of damage to the roadway.
Yeah, because we have to send crews down there and fix that stuff.
Modot's even contacted me now and is asking me on how they can help to try to change that. And that's, that's going to be through, I think it's Garmin that, right now, if you punch in the, uh, the prison, it takes you through Osage City to try to get there.
They use different ones though and I think that's been part of the problem is they're just following their GPS. If it's old GPS that hasn't updated, it'll still take them to Osage City. You can put signs up there that say, you know, no big trucks, no turnaround, no anything. They still drive right through because they're just watching their GPS and it's speaking in Spanish. They can't read our signs, so...
I don't know about that, but I know that there are signs up there.
Well, let's be honest about it. That's exactly what it is. The last time the guy down there blamed it all on Trump, so... And he was speaking Spanish all the time. He didn't, he didn't have, he couldn't read the signs, so...
I wasn't, I didn't hear, I didn't know that.
Yeah, well, the one that told me about it was, that happens a lot down there unfortunately. So what's going to keep other jurisdictions from enacting ordinances and then more stuff that we got to keep up with?
Well, they would have to come, well, to me first and then we'd have to come to you and it'd have to be, I'd have to agree to it and you'd have to agree to it.
They can basically write as many ordinances as they want to and it's going to be up to...
It's up to them.
You if you're going to enforce it, right?
It's up to them to enforce them unless I sign a contract specific to the, the ordinance that they want to pass.
Because even with the health department, if they enact some ordinance above our health, the county health code...
Yeah, then they have to enforce it. Like, they can have stricter codes, but they have to enforce it. They have to make people comply. They have to issue the fines, they have to collect the money, they have to hold the court.
That was like Saint Martin's on their, their pet, their animal ordinance.
In unincorporated areas.
Right.
No, we got contracts with Saint Thomas?
Unless we have a contract to, to do it.
For the health?
For what?
Oh, we don't have any with them either? Russellville still hasn't gotten theirs to us?
They keep saying they want them, but we don't have it. And for food, we just...
Alright, I'm probably just overthinking it.
Closest I can remember was when Saint Martin stood the animal ordinance. I think that's the last time we had them add something.
Good.
Yeah.
Call vote or commission? Call the vote. You had a motion in a second.
Oh, did, oh, okay, oh, in favor?
Jeff seconded.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, aye. I did not hear. I did not hear.
I first missed a discussion here because...
I did not hear you make a motion. I did not hear. Yes, when you get old, your hearing goes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
See y'all later.
See you.
Sure.
See y'all later.
Okay.
Adios.
Do we have any other issues before we go into closed session?
I don't know, usually we got some notes that we got something to address. And I think I got my emails and stuff cleaned up.
That's been very quiet.
Oh, man, don't say that.
Oh.
Alright, I'm, no, I don't think I have an email about our C-CAM training that's coming up.
Yeah, I did too.
So we do need to talk to our reps and senators about letting that, um, count as our C-CAM training.
Yeah, I got ham and bean dinner that Wednesday.
Well, I don't want to be around you.
The Lions Club ham and bean, well, and then Friday, when we're supposed to do that, I'm supposed to be at Cap Region's retreat.
I just, it's a waste of time, so I'd like to, if we can kill it all at one time, it'd be nice, so...
Alright.
I do have one issue. I have a check here from the prosecuting attorney who wants to attach on. I'm not sure what to do with it, so I don't know if you guys know anything about it or anything. It's for $45,000.
I had talked to Mark when he had the, the thing to hi, to hire the two new victims advocates and he said he was going to send a check down to cover some of the, the costs that he incurred.
I think it's for the second victim advocate.
Okay, the looks of that grant, it was supposed to pay for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the grant was supposed to cover the cost for the victim advocate.
I guess we need...
That may be the money from the grant. I guess we pay them and they reimburse, I don't know. That's all I can think of.
The grant funds are coming directly to, are they?
So there's no notation as to what it's for?
I called and then they said it was a transfer to the county. A budget adjustment.
Here's a phone prosecutor's office?
I guess we need to call back and ask him what he's talking about.
Just a little more explanation on it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else before we go into closed session?
I don't have any. Jeff, you go ahead?
Don't think so.
No. I move we go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri for Legal Actions Sub 1.
Second.
Roll call?
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes. Right in the hole of December.
I know what you mean. Did you bring that printout with the...
Just reading it here.
Oh, my God, I did it.
That's okay.
Can we go get it?
No.
You sure?
Mm-hmm.
We had three of them, didn't we?
Yep.
Oh, here it is.
It's okay. This one. Okay, we are going to start with bid opening, um, 2017-40 for heavy equipment maintenance, repair and parts. That's the first one on the list. I'm well prepared today. I remembered my letter opener too. Okay, the first bid is from Loft Equipment Company. Um, the second is from Fabic Cat. I think I'm going to end up having to copy parts of this.
How do you spell that last name?
Um, F-A-B-I-C-K.
Oh, F-A-N, okay.
Okay. And the last response for this bid is from Sheppers International Truck. I believe this is your original. There you go. Okay, moving on to bid number 2017-41 for Pest Management Services. Let me see your pen.
Sure.
This one's not getting my thumb in here.
Yeah, just a little bit of a...
Okay, the first bid is from, yeah. The first bid is from Mike's Pest Control.
I will now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to keep it.
I'm not greedy, yeah. Did you give it back to her or did I take it?
Did you give it back to me, or did I take it?
You took it, Lynn. You're like a...
I know.
Ollie. And the next bid is from Presto X. I'm actually gonna take that and save it and then give it back to you.
Yeah.
Actually, Lynn...
Mm-hmm.
This should be... There's two of these. I'm not sure. You can keep one anyway.
Oh, okay.
And the last bid for today is two thousand seventeen forty-two for Center Material and Hauling. Okay, the first bid is from Carpenter Construction. Okay, the second bid is from Bizjust Trucking. And that is it. These will all be taken under advisement.